All right, welcome everyone. We are calling our hearing to order, our budget hearing. And we've got a forum here, we don't need to do a roll call, and a roll call, and I hand the floor over to you, Michelle.
Okay, there you go. We're gonna walk through the twenty-four, twenty-five budgets for adoption.
Well, I'm showing it on Zoom. Are you sure? Is that how you're sharing it up there through? It's easy. This one is Mary Library.
I was talking over one of yours to me, Diana, are you able to get it back? For Michelle?
I don't know, she's doing all this stuff now. Okay.
Well, she's so much of the hearing of Glendale River Hills. We're gonna go over the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And this is the notice of the budget hearing. It was published in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and then also, we leave it on short now. The timeline of this year's budget started in July. When the board adopted, we put together a preliminary budget, and the board approved the budget on July twenty-fourth, and then we moved into gathering more information as more factors are known for the budget. September twentieth was the third Friday of the week we called. We conducted that, our vote was up. Also, we did our summer school membership report, and were able to help students from summer school. On October first, the Department of Revenue put out the tax and portioned value certification of property values, and that helps us to arrive at our levy rate for the community. It's also a factor in next year's utilization. On October fifteenth, the Department of Public Instruction certified general school aids, and then also, October fifteenth, private school voucher amounts were announced. That did increase this year by one hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. The district uses seven funds. They each have their specific purpose, and they have different guidelines. So we have Fund Ten, that's our general fund, and we use that to account for financial transactions for current operations and instruction. Fund Twenty-One is the special revenue fund, and it is used to account for student activities, clubs, as well as gifts and donations. Fund Twenty-Seven is our special education fund, and we use that to account for the excess cost of finding special education and related services for students who have disabilities. Then we have a non-referendum debt fund. This is debt that the taxpayers did not have to go down to approve. Fund Thirty-Eight is used to account for these transactions related to the non-referendum debt. Our payment's going to the state trust for a month, but then, Fund Thirty-Eight. Then we also have a long-term capital improvement fund, Fund Forty-Six. But this is used for long-term capital improvement projects that are approved by the support and listed on the capital improvement plan. And we also have the community service fund to account for transactions related to the school community service program. And a last fund that we use is Fund Eighty. That's our community service fund, and it's used to account for activities owed to the community. So in arriving at the budget, the biggest driver parameters were kind of constrained by our revenue limit, and the formula for arriving at that revenue limit is our resident membership FTE, which this year is nine twenty-four, and then the per pupil amount that we had, based plus what the state allows through the state budget for an increase, and then one-time non-recurring exceptions, and this is where the plus the four point five million that we're requesting to see the revenue limit is in there, as well as other non-recurring exceptions, the voucher programs that we put on, that we levy for, that's in there. And then ongoing reoccurring exceptions, this fourteen thousand two oh two is the transfer service. So students coming into our district with costs, arguing with these are costs. And then we arrive at our total revenue limit authority of ninety million one hundred fifteen thousand five sixty-four. So the biggest driver behind this is our student enrollment and membership. So I'm showing here the September twenty-twenty-four, and then preceding years of September enrollment. It's fairly consistent. We have consistent enrollment, and then open-enrolled students coming into Glendale River Hills, and then students that are residents of the district opening up to other districts. And then there's a calculation along with, you know, the board pay and preschool, and we arrive at our September resident FTE. I also included the independent charter school number, which the last few years we had a number two FTE for that. And then this year, we counted summer school, and we get to count forty percent of that amount. So our total resident membership used in the revenue limit is the average of those three years highlighted in the bottom, and that arrives at, you know, nine twenty. General fund is made up of, these are the revenues, main general fund revenue is the local tax levy. This year, with the six million dollar loan, the state trust fund loan that we took out, that is under the financing source, we normally do not have that. So the local tax levy in most years would take out a bigger percentage of revenues. There are some state revenues, six percent there, federal revenues, and then other Wisconsin districts, this is mainly the open enrollment. Then the general fund expenses, salaries and benefits are the biggest portion of our budget, our Fund Ten budget, and then also transfers, transfer to other funds, the transfer to the special education fund to support those costs there. So for the Fund, for Fund Ten, general fund, with the approved four point five million referendum, the district, we started the year July first with a negative fund balance of one point six million. Revenues anticipated projected to be twenty-six million nine oh three five forty-two, and expenditures of nineteen million one hundred four thousand five oh eight, and that's after budget cuts reductions of over one million dollars. It just, we would have an ending fund balance in June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five of six million one hundred seventy-one thousand five hundred, and that fund balance at year-end would be used in the next year, the year after that, to balance out our expenditures, you know, add to our revenues, we'd be using that. Fund Twenty-One, our special projects, there is not a lot that runs through here, but has a fund balance twenty-eight thousand five thirty-nine, and then anticipated revenues based on historical what occurred there of nine thousand nine forty-seven, and then expenses about twelve thousand. Ending fund balance would be twenty-six thousand forty-six. And our special education fund, we're not allowed to have a fund balance there. We start the year at zero, we end the year at zero. Revenues of four million five hundred eighty-nine thousand eight oh six, and expenditures same. And as I said earlier, there's a transfer there to make up the revenues of three million, over three million dollars coming in there. Cover the costs and expenses. Fund Thirty-Eight, non-referendum debt, started the year with twenty-six thousand four eighty-six. We have revenues coming in through the tax levy of four hundred twenty-three thousand six twenty-six, and then expenditures of four hundred twenty-five thousand three thirty, with an ending fund balance of twenty-four thousand seven eighty-two. The revenues and expenses are up to cover the cost of the first debt payment in March of six million. And then Fund Forty-Six is our long-term capital improvement fund. This start was established by the board of October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and it is required to, once it starts being funded, to, you can't use it for five years. So it will be accessible to the district October twentieth, twenty-seven. Then our community service fund, we started the year with a fund balance of twenty-two thousand four ninety, anticipating revenues of three hundred seventy thousand and expenses of three hundred eighty thousand to end the year with a fund balance of twelve thousand four ninety. The revenues and expenditures for the community service program are projected to decrease because we're no longer selling meals to private schools in the interim. Then our community service fund, beginning fund balance of two million eighty thousand five forty-three. This is due to a large levy last year. We will not be levying into this fund this year. We do have reserves there for any type of improvements that are needed in the community service fund. Revenues, four hundred thousand, and that would all be from rentals of the Good Hope Building, and then some other facility rentals here in Parkway, and then expenses of four hundred fifty thousand. That is a projection based on historical amounts for that fund. And our all funds expense of twenty-four million nine hundred sixty-one thousand six forty-four minus the transfer of three million twenty-four thousand ninety-nine dollars, and net expenses twenty-one million nine hundred thirty-seven thousand five forty-five. And this is showing historical, and then the current year, and then projection for next year. Showing the different, the levy amounts, the revenues, expenditures, and then what the levy and mill rate looks like. If you look at the word column, you know, levy and mill rate for including the four point five million referendum that passes, we're looking at a levy rate of seven dollars fifty-eight cents. Last year's was six dollars thirteen cents, and next year's projection is six dollars and fifty-five cents. And that's with the four point five billion additional next year as well. Certified property values, the city of Glendale's decreased likely, I believe it was point three one percent, and the village of River Hills went up slightly, and those are used to determine our levy rate for each of those values. So our total, our tax levy, Fund Ten would be eighteen million fifty-seven thousand eight sixty-seven, and then Fund Thirty-Eight, our non-referendum debt, four hundred twenty-three thousand six twenty-six. Zero levy in the community service fund for a total levy of eighteen million four eighty-one four ninety-three, and that levy rate, taking that certified property values, we have a levy rate of seven dollars fifty-eight cents. So that is what the budget would look like with the passage of the four point five million. And at the board meeting after this, the board will need to adopt two budgets, one with the four point five million and one without, so. This is what it would look, Fund Ten would look like with the, without the four point five million. So same beginning, negative fund balance of one point six to seven. And then revenues would decrease by that four point five million to twenty-two million four oh three five forty-two. Expenditures would stay the same. District was not planning to increase expenses, but to cover future expenses that we know we're gonna have. Ending fund balance would be one million six hundred seventy-one thousand five hundred. The tax levy without the four point five million referendum would be thirteen million five fifty-seven eight sixty-seven for the general fund, and then Fund Thirty-Eight would be four hundred twenty-three thousand six twenty-six. Total off-own levy of thirteen million nine hundred eighty-one thousand four ninety-three with a levy rate of five dollars and seventy-three cents. And then this is showing the historical, and then it's also showing the current.
Thank you, Chris.
Keeping a draw.
And then it's also showing what next year would look like without the levy, where you can see in the last line, I believe, of the top chart, the bar right, we would have a negative fund balance of three point five million, I believe. So that, that's the reason, one of the reasons we need this increase. So that's what it would look like without. The levy and mill rate, if the four point five million referendum fails, will be down to five dollars and seventy-three cents, and then drop even lower next year. Next year, the one point five eight million that community approved in the past, that's dropping off that referend, that levy to the exception to exceed the revenue limit. And that shows that right here in this chart, if you see that line, the red line's pointing to non-reoccurring referendum. We currently have approved one point five eight million dollars, and next year, that drops totally off without the four point five increase. Now, if you have any questions?
Late margin, seventy-two, seventy-five, North Port Washington Road, apartment twelve twenty-one, Glendale, Wisconsin, five thirty-one seven. So on the budget publication, without the four point five million dollar referendum, there is an increase in the tax levy of five hundred-ish thousand dollars. I was under the impression of a referendum fail that there was a freeze on the levy. Is that not the case?
No, there's not a freeze on levy. It was going up anyway due to that expansion of our student count. And then the state also gave us a three hundred twenty-five dollar per pupil increase in the revenue. And then another factor too that lays into that is the vouchers went up for our voucher students, I believe, one hundred seventy-four thousand seventy-eight.
So if, with a referendum fails, it's just, you don't get the four point five million, there's no other negative consequence?
That's correct.
Then, is this presentation gonna be on for dots later?
Anyone else from our audience? Diana, is there anyone else online who has any questions, comments?
Nope.
And we're not gonna ask questions in this, right? That's not our job. Okay. So that includes our budget hearing. We have six minutes before the start time of our board meeting, so we are, we're adjourned until six-thirty. Not in recess. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, they're fine.
So then.
So. So this uh. And maybe one that I share once that I've had in one screen. Listening now in the base that you know.
So I think we decided over we should be able to see more.
Yeah.
There is. You know.
Then my PowerPoint, I'm really worried about it.
Yeah, we'll just do it on that one.
Okay.
Which will be fine. They'll want to see a space. Right?
Well, yeah, you want to see the stock.
Okay.
We're almost ready to start back.
Well.
I probably have a lot of answers. Over there.
Yeah, yeah.
And they probably.
Let's not have to do it in real life. Because I'm just really worried of this.
Yeah, to be honest.
But I guess I just. Ah, so I think it's going to be if someone would think it should be motion to prove it. And there will be a second motion to prove that the amount of. You need to directly. And then a third motion to prove of that the amount of.
And Mike, I already have you on the screen, too.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were talking.
We're just having a short break. We're starting in a minute.
And.
Am I the first thing up or?
No, a couple of things before.
Okay.
One option. That's right. It was only one.
Yes, right.
Hey, I'm doing this again.
I think we are. Get Mike on the screen.
All right. Calling our meeting to order, October twenty-third, coordinating the Wendell River Hills School District Board. Welcome, everyone. Big love to your agenda. Um, all right, call us to order and roll call. Chris Robinson here, Park Ronwell here, Gary Ables. Here, Danielle Bailey here, Carl Pennington Cross is here. We inform the board is present. Anyone who wishes to say the Pledge of Allegiance may stand and pledge at this time.
The United States of America. Just stands on the nation under God indivisible, with the reason and trust strong.
All right. Thank you, everyone. On to the agenda, item one D, agenda approval. Motion. Who to approve the agenda? Second. Second by Chris Robinson, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
And onto item one D, one E, approval of meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of? T V.
I'm going to approve the meeting minutes of ten nineteen point four and ten sixteen point.
Ten nine and ten sixteen.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I have just got.
Oh, okay. Sorry, sorry.
On the approval of the minutes for our budget hearing, there's a chunk missing that where we recruit the chunk of things at the end. Then it's. That's the second we succeed.
What are the chunk of things?
Well, we approved uh. We approved five, then starting four and we presented to.
Oh, right. The last minutes. Yeah, so it's the policy on things.
Oh.
It was the last. Uh, set of policies. So we can amend that, bring it back next meeting.
I just remind you.
Can't. The motion belongs to the, you can make a motion to amend.
I'm going to amend. To adopt ten nine, I'll give more.
Is there a second to that motion to amend?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, the motion has been amended. So now there's motion pending to adopt the minutes of the ten nine meeting. Does this sound awful? Turn it on. Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. All right, the October nine meeting minutes are adopted. October sixteen, we'll just bring back the next meeting so that they're clear. Thank you, everyone. Nice catch, Katie. All right, before we head into the heart of the meeting, um now that business is done, I want the offer around it. If that's okay with everyone. Um FYI, there is a bridge today. I remembered it. It's posted up on the whiteboard. We'll bring pen next to there. If anyone has bridge items, feel free to walk on over to them up there. Um, today, our work is focused heavily in the zone of our stewardship pillar of the strategic plan. And our district commitment to working in a collective and intentional manner towards a sustainable future for our district. And as I reflected on our meeting today, um. I meditated on the center of our schools. I came across this thing from George Bernard Shaw that I'd like to share. It has resonated with me. Um, and I think it's a great grounding idea for me and hopefully for all of us. It speaks to our community's commitment to each other. Um, to our children, to our world, our shared sense of ownership and accountability for what comes next. And this is what George said. Or I think he may have preferred Bernard. This is the true joy in life, being used for a purpose recognized by yourself as a mighty one. Being a force of nature instead of a feverish, selfish little plot of ailments and grievances, complaining that the world will not devote itself making you happy. I am of the opinion that my life belongs to the whole community. And as long as I live, it is my privilege to do for good what I can. I want to be thoroughly used up when I die, but the harder I work, the more out of living. I rejoice in light of words of mercy. Life is no brief candle to me. It is a sort of splendid torch which I have got hold of for the moment, and I want to make it burn as brightly as possible. Before handing it on to future generations. So, all right. That's where my head is. All right, let's do it. Public comments. Anyone wish to speak on non-agenda items at this time? Anyone online?
Nope.
We just saved ten minutes for the topics under agenda items three. Uh, starting with the twenty-two, twenty-three audit report, and at this time, I would ask if someone would be willing to be timekeeper. I, I failed. All right, and so we have, um, I would say. Let's start with. An hour on the clock and see if we can finish up the topics under item three.
Do you have an hour for all of them or do you have?
Let's do an hour for all of them. Does that work? Just sort of give an hour passes and we'll gather ourselves. And today I'll try to be organized and make sure we go around the table so that everybody has a chance to speak. All right. Item three A, audit report. I'm curious. Welcome. Can you hear us?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you. You're, you're ready for me to go, go ahead into it?
We are ready for you.
I heard public comments and I thought there would be some comments. I guess not.
There might still be of the audit, but that'll come after you tell us about it.
See, this is Mike Samba. He's our auditor. Okay, he's gonna talk about our twenty-two, twenty-three audit report. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, thank you and good evening, everybody. Um, do I have the ability to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Just prepared a very brief summary of the findings that we'll go over here. Uh, let's see here. Click the right screen. Do you see, um? Summary of the audit. Okay. Okay, so, um, so yeah, these are, this is the. Summary of the audit results. Um, so. Number one, the overall audit report contains an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. Which means we feel that uh the statements fairly present a financial position and results of the year's operations. Uh, the government auditing standards report on internal control and compliance. Over financial reporting identified four internal control findings, which I'll discuss in more detail. Uh, the single audit report on internal control and compliance over major federal and state programs identified one internal control finding. Related to the pupil transportation program, which again I'll talk in a little bit more detail on those. Um, number four, the audit letter to the board addresses our responsibility as auditors. And what you can expect from an audit and the financial statements. Uh, it states that there were no disagreements with management and we had no difficulties in performing this year's audit. Um, that being said, we've had previous discussions, you know. Aside from the known difficulties that we've, we've gotten worked through. Um, so then there's a new accounting standard uh that became effective. Related to subscription-based information technology arrangements, which is basically software that uh districts. Pay on a monthly basis. Uh, under certain definitions, and it was determined that the district really didn't have anything that met the criteria. So this new accounting standard didn't have any effect on the district's financial statements. So now to go to the audit findings, the first one. It's related to inability to prepare GAAP financial statements. Um, this is. Typical at every district we've ever worked with. Um, it just goes to the fact that, you know, it, it's not really economical to. Uh, hi- hire an in-house CPA who has the knowledge to actually prepare these. Going on a hundred-page uh financial statements with all disclosures and all the accounting standards you need to know to do that. So they hire their auditor to do it. And they just review and approve the statements. So it's always going to be a finding, um, but it's not really a major concern. It's just technically we have to report it.
Excuse me, Mike, could I pause you for a moment?
Yeah.
Is, is this the document that the board has? The one that you're, you're presenting?
This would be part of the final uh financial statements that were provided to the district.
Did you point me to like page number or something where I should, where I, so I can follow?
Uh, sure, sure. One moment.
I think it's eighty-one.
Yeah, it, yeah, it is near the back, yes.
Okay.
Um, okay, I was gonna go on to number two then. So this one relates to uh segregation of duties, which basically means with a smaller staff. Um, you can't. Properly segregate all of the duties that would ideally be separated uh in an ideal internal control environment. Um. You know, that's also common at smaller districts. Um. Even though you do have a few different people in the accounting department, it's not. Um. Again, it's more of a technicality than anything. It's not just an, it's not an ideal segregation as defined in a textbook sort of way. Um, so we have to report that, um. So in those situations, we encourage the district to just rely on more management review and oversight of everything, which is already the case. Um, so that's what that finding is about. Number three. This one relates to budgets. Um, so there was a budget amendment that. Um, didn't have the details needed. And so I think. It just needs to be in the, in the future, budget amendments just need to be published with the correct information. Probably a one-off type thing, but that's what we found when we reviewed the budgets and the budget amendments. Uh, I think in this one, it was related to. Uh. Something with Fund Twenty-seven. And. Next one, uh, more internal control procedures. Um, and this had to do with the cash reconciliations and credit card reconciliations. Uh, that they were not reviewed and approved. Um, and this, you know. This was sort of at the time when this all started, um. They may be approved now at this point, and I think they were, everything is now reconciled to date. Um. So we recommend that uh there are just sort of written procedures in place. Uh, for approving bank reconciliations monthly. Um. And I think the district's plan is. That you'll continue doing it on a monthly basis and. Um, yeah, it's, everything should be good. As far as I know, that, that is what has been happening. I know we're going to be starting the next audit in a week or two. So we'll follow up on some of these things and hopefully be removing them in that audit report. And the final thing with pupil transportation. Um, so there was just not documentation available that could be found to substantiate the number that were claimed. And so again, the, the fix is just to make sure to keep. The proper documentation on file that matches, you know, the, the number that's being reported for transportation and. You know, possibly having multiple people that are responsible for double checking that before it gets submitted would be a good idea, too. Um, it sounds like the district is going to work with its provider, transportation provider to have a verification process, and that's a good idea as well. Um. So, yeah, that's, that's that finding. And I guess that and I would open up for any questions anyone has about all of these.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mike. Um, let's start at the second of the circle, Chris. What are the implications of the transportation aid fund? Does that come with financial penalties or anything?
It's a good question. Um. There are situations where DPI will ask for funds back. I don't know the exact number that you got for transportation for that, but um. And I also don't know if they followed up to say to, to have you give them money back. But that, that can be what happens in those situations. Usually we just submit these findings and then DPI, I don't, we, we don't know. DPI does its own thing with follow-ups and what it decides to do.
Thank you. I can address transportation fees, too. Um, when I filed the last report for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Uh, I noticed that twenty-two, twenty-three is off, and I asked them, like, you change it? And they said, no, you can't go back and change it. They did not mention any penalties, but, you know, they didn't want to change.
Hey, Karen.
Hi, thanks for your time. I'm gonna direct my question actually to Michelle. Um, so based on the recommendations that are here, it seems to me we resolved. Or addressed many of the issues that were identified in this audit, and of course, we now know that's two years' historical. Um, information. So it seems as though we're on a good pathway now. We have the checks announced since that were recommended. That has been in place since you put us in July, and some of those have been put in place maybe in the spring with our prior interim people, correct?
This, we don't think our opinion is as far as our monthly statements have been, you know, at one level, you know, I'll improve them to, you know. Superintendent, improve them, and then we can bring reports to the board and swap. That's the one thing that we're still need to implement is working on support.
And I do have one question. Mike, I have to be honest, um. Based on this presentation tonight, I don't know as a school board member, I would understand the urgency that would be tied to the errors that you discovered. Is that because you know that we're already collectively addressing these or? Um. Would there be a different way that you would be? Notifying us?
Um, I, I'm not. Not sure I fully understand what, what you mean. Are you saying, or are you asking why I don't, I'm not more concerned, or is that what you mean?
I just, you know, if this were, if this were a presentation being offered at the correct time, right, where the board would not have. A year and a half, for instance, of. Lapse between when it would typically be presented and now, would you be giving more urgency or highlighting more strongly your concerns?
Oh.
Because the way it's night, I don't know as a board member, I would understand the significance of your concerns.
Yes, well, my understanding is that, yes, a lot of these things, I mean, we, for, for example. The cash reconciliation problem, you know, at one point there was a large. Um. You know, it was, it was off. The reconciliation was off by a large amount, and we now know that that has been rectified. If it wasn't still rectified, I would have major concerns about that. Um, so, and that was probably the biggest area of concern, because that's the biggest area where, you know. Potentially, there could be things on the worst-case scenario like fraud occurring. So because that's not the case, yeah, I'm, I'm not sounding the alarm on that because I know that they've done the work to fix it, but. Had they not done that, yeah, absolutely, I'd be concerned about it and would be. S- suggesting that you should be concerned as well. suggesting that you should be concerned as well. So yeah, I, I think you, you've, you've explained it correctly that the so much time has passed and so much work towards these things has been done, that that's why you know, I'm not as concerned now because there, there's solutions being implemented.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so the, the finding around our, I'm sorry if I missed this, deficiency and internal control find, finding inability to prepare GAAP financial statements was present in twenty-two, is a finding in twenty-three. I see a corrective action plan that looks much like the one in twenty-two that said the finding was not corrected, so it has that, can someone sort of? Oh, the gap. So it says GAAP financial statements, so they'll continue to oversee the auditor services? That's the one that, Mike, could you explain that again? But I know you explained it, and I was, I understood it when you said it, but I can't repeat it. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, no problem. So that finding relates to the district not having a, a experienced CPA who understands all the accounting standards to be able to prepare these reports. So the solution then is to hire the auditor and then the district just reviews the work of the auditor and approves it. And so the corrective action plan as described here, it says the district does not have the resources and staff to prepare the financial statements and notes, but will continue to oversee the auditor's services and review and approve the financial statements and accept responsibility for them. So this finding will always be here unless you decide to make a hire of someone who can do this work. And take, and then the auditor wouldn't prepare the financial statements for you, you'd do them internally. And I've only seen that attempted one time and then they abandoned that effort. It wasn't a fruitful endeavor.
Well, it's a common finding for listeners. Okay, then my other question is just about in terms of, uh, as we go forward. Um, in your October fourth letter to us, you talk about our responsibility for communicating significant matters related to the audit. That in your professional judgment relevant, are relevant to our board responsibilities and overseeing the financial reporting process. So I, I guess I'm just, I wanna think about going forward and things like, I don't think this will be our reality. Um, but in terms of a different board and a different administration or whatnot, it could be, right? Um, and so going forward would the things that happened in twenty-two, twenty-three in terms of, uh, our business manager's inability to file, like, present you with documents in a timely manner, would that be considered a significant matter in which you would alert the board? Um, if the audit is not completed on time uh, or cannot be completed on time, are the, would you consider those significant matters for which you would alert the board?
Yes, yes, I would.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's my main concern, Mike, is, you know, that we, we didn't learn about the challenges around, um, getting the reconciliations done and all that until quite late. And, um, I'm not sure how to remedy that going forward. You know, it's a hypothetical question because we seem to have very, very competent staff now, but, um, you know, we don't wanna be a board that's just sort of sticking our noses in and looking over people's shoulders. And I, I feel a sort of lack of confidence right now. How do we know that we're gonna be contacted by our auditors if there's a problem? Uh, you know, that there's a question mark. You're, you're getting intel that suggests something's going wrong. Like, what, what's our avenue for keeping our eye on that? And offering that oversight that we're supposed to offer?
Uh, no, that's a great question. I mean, I would say if I was a board member, you know, you kind of know the general, well, you could find out. I would, I would wanna know, okay, um, school management, when is the audit? So I'd wanna know when the audit's taking place, you know, that's just, they can tell you that in two minutes in a meeting or whatever.
Situation, the real situation that we're being told the audit's going, the audit's going. It's, it's going, but we know that you're seeing evidence that the reconciliation numbers are just wildly not making sense. Like, I, I mean, should we be contacting the auditor starting in September and asking, hey, how's it going? Hey, how's it going? Or do we just sit and rely on our business manager and superintendent? I mean, what, what do you see from other boards?
No, I mean, well, I was, so yes, first asking them, like, when is the audit, then following up with them, you know, okay, we had the audit last week, how'd it go? And, and when you don't seem to be getting the answers, you know, this is, this is absent any extra effort by us to communicate to you, you know, you're, you're just asking them these basic questions first. And then, yeah, you can reach out to us really at any time. Like, yeah, I could say I'm going to tell you guys that if there's something that's important and you need to know, like, reconciliations aren't done. But yeah, what if I fall through on that? You can reach out to us at any time. It was a pretty unique situation, the way things unfolded, so we haven't really dealt with that very often. But yeah, there's, and you know, if you wanna have, like, schedule with us, a an update meeting or email or whatever, you know, we can do that too. I mean, that's fine. I just, I don't know if it's, you know, it's, it's hard to compare district to district because everything works differently.
Yeah, because it's always that balance, it can be the, um, micromanaging board that wastes time and throws up trouble. And being the board that's overlooked something we should know about, right? So we're, we're trying to find that balance going forward, and I continue to puzzle where it lands. And you know, even as I read this eighty-nine-page auditor report, which as a lawyer, it's just completely great to me. I have a lot of questions that come up, and so I've already talked with Anna about this, but I'm beginning to think, you know, because this is autopsy at this point. And we're, we're gonna get the twenty-three, twenty-four autopsy soon, and I'm wondering about, um, the value of having sort of like a, a workshop, a debrief on the, on the autopsy sometime after both audits are done. So that we can learn more about what's contained in them, start understanding more what the number changes are between our adopted budgets and what actually happened, and kind of get up this learning curve so we can, uh, be a more effective board. So, um, I don't know how you feel about that, what your role in that would be, but I think it would be really helpful to this board to have that education from Michelle and from you or your staff to help us, um, you know, be very effective in our oversight, which for those of us who've been on the board for a little longer, you know, we're wondering, like, what more do we need to learn and how do we get there? So something I just wanna post up out there.
I think that's a good idea, I think, and I do see that done at other districts where, you know, the, the, the business manager will do some level of training with the board, especially new board members, but, you know, and, and then refreshing it um, when needed. So I think that's a good practice to have.
Uh, anyone else on the board with other questions or thoughts? Uh, audience and visitors wish to ask, like, any questions? I see Mr. Martin queuing up. Thanks, Mr. Martin.
Name Martin, seventy-two, seventy-five, North Port Washington Road. Apartment number twelve, twenty-one, Glendale, Wisconsin, five, three, two, one, seven. I just, I'll go over a few things for board reference. A lot of the stuff that you can understand, that's in relatively plain English, starts with age. It was sixty-six in twenty-twenty-two audit, but supplemental information. Lot of stuff before that is county wording. That I hope at some point you all will be able to fully grasp and understand, but a lot of the English regular person stuff starts there. Then also, just for reference, all, all the other districts I looked at, Nigley, Mackinac, the other few per school, student, Clay, all of them, they have the significant, they have deficiency of internal controls and without comparing, yeah, so it's, it's basically, do you wanna hire someone to do this or maybe the other? When is the audit gonna be publicly available?
I've posted both on our website as well as on in board docs.
Thanks, Mr. Martin. Anyone else in our visitors or online? Okay, and then, um, I have some like detailed questions. Should I just throw them your way if I remember them tomorrow? Like, you can just send out an email, Michelle. With some, like, I have some, like, technical questions about some of the numbers as I'm starting to understand this stuff, so I'll, I'll eventually shoot that. Okay. Anything else? All right, Mike, thank you so much for joining us.
Yep, thanks, everybody.
Great, have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Have a good night. Bye-bye.
All right, um, so enough off, we're an hour in tonight. Can we take a, we can take a brief break now or do we just run away a little bit? Let's get through business office. All right, so that works for me. Okay. Item three, the business office update. Come there.
Just the, the purpose of the financial, the financial reports are, um, to inform the board, um, Board Policy sixteen, three, one, um, of the Glendale River Hill School District Policy states that it calls for a listing of expenditures and appropriate financial reports to be submitted monthly to the school board to keep them informed of the status of the budget and financial condition of the district. The attached reports are to inform the board of the financial transactions that occurred in the month of September. Um, there's a revenue and expense by fund report. And this report is prepared out by fund, and it shows the revenues and expenses from the start of the fiscal year, July first, one, twenty-four, and through the month of the report, along with the monthly activity. The report is summed up by the three-digit revenue source and the three-digit expense object. And it is directly from our software, um, and by fund. So the first page is the general fund, um, fund ten. And at the top, um, if you look in the columns, you see the ten that represents the fund, and then next to that, um, the first few lines are Rs, those are revenues. Um, below that, you'll see ten E, those are expenses. And those are summed up. The description of the summary line is in the middle in words. And you'll see the fiscal year-to-date activity, um, through September, and then the monthly activity. And at the bottom, it's totally the revenues and then also the expenses, and whether it's a profit or a loss for that month. The district, um, as we are, we receive most of our revenue through tax levy, and that starts coming in in January, so we don't see a lot of revenues at this time of year. And then, um, the next page is one twenty-one. And every report will show all seven months that we're using. The next report is, um, September twenty-four, AP checks issued for payment. This has all the checks that have ran through our accounts payable system, um, it through the month of, for the month of September. The listing contains checks, um, issued, the date of the check, a brief description of the item being paid, the vendor, the amount of the payment, and the account number of the payment. And this is in account number order. Um, checks issued for payroll liabilities and payroll deductions are included here. So you'll see checks to our insurance carrier, United Health. Um, you'll see checks for, um, employees' TSA contributions, um, to AXA or WBA. And then regular payments for, um, expenses incurred, supplies, services. Then the next report is summary of pay benefits and AP payments, um, for September. And this report lists the gross amount of the September payrolls, um. There are two payrolls, um, per month, the fifteenth and the thirtieth of the month. And, um, the first couple of lines are those payrolls, and then those are summed up. Then benefits that are applied to people's checks. And one, one difference in this report from last month, this is just showing the gross um, amount of payroll. So if someone's paid twenty-five dollars an hour for twenty hours, you're gonna see that's included there. Deductions aren't taken out, so you'll see what is the gross cost of payroll. Um, and then the benefit piece, what are the benefits applied to that payroll as well? So those are our expenses for payroll. And then low that, HRA payments, um, those are deducted from our bank automatically. Each person or group on the family, I mean, on the health insurance, a single, we contribute a thousand dollars towards an HRA pay that as those expenses are incurred. And then, um, for a VLE plan, it's two thousand. But we don't pay that all, out of all at once, it's just when it's needed, when it's used. And then you'll see our retiree, um, premium costs for our insurance. And then below that is accounts payable. In this, I did take out those payroll-related liabilities, so you can see what are the those expenses. And then ECH expenses, and that's the credit card that was updated or needs to be updated through ECH. Um, they automatically pull those funds each month. So those are the total, um, amount payments that were incurred in September.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
All right, so the recommended action is that we approve these September financials, uh, before discussion is in session. All right, discussion, so you, Mark?
Uh, I guess I would ask the whole turn. How do you like, what do you think about these questions, presenting stuff? This is a, Michelle and I have been talking a lot about like how much information and how it's presented. Is this format helpful?
I especially appreciate the reference expense. That's really, that's probably the most helpful for me. Um, and then, and the challenge to history is, it's good to understand. I don't know if the payroll and benefits, but that's kind of, that's neat. You know, because I was gonna say, that's the document I really like.
Well, there you go. So not separate. Um, but that, that's just probably me needing to dig in.
I think on the, the pay benefits, month over month would be nice to see. Like, if it was just, uh, I think back to when I was, when I was the treasurer of this ETO. So a document like this, we would just file it month over month. So each year through the fiscal year, I could watch that growing list of numbers, and then I could track kind of what it looks like through the year. That's kind of visually what helped me see, right? And then that gives us that look at how steady that number is staying, instead of me having to go back and find the audit statement. So I don't know, I don't wanna create work, but I know that that's what I was looking at this and thinking, you know, it'd be great if I could just see month over month.
I was actually thinking that same thing. They just, I mean, we, obviously, we have access to people, we can go back and look, but if it'd be just to have the comparison right there, it's easy. I have, um, questions about the revenue and expense report in terms of the community service.
I have um questions about the revenue and expense report in terms of the community service.
Um so I'm when I look at local revenues for this month. It's eighteen eighty. Is that, are those the rents?
That is. That's what was reported and I'm thinking Adam just came on that we might not have recorded the revenues in fund eighty. For the rentals. We do get rental payments monthly. That shouldn't be higher than that.
Okay, because I was gonna say this is the year to date, it's year months.
Right, that's correct. Last year, um those rentals were recorded in general book.
Ah, okay.
This year, we're moving to recording those in fund eighty, so you can match that expense with. Here's that revenue coming in as well, so that'll be cleaned up. Yes.
Okay, that was just an error.
Oh, you could record it in ten or. Eighty, I think it would be good to see it in eighty.
Right, right. And then the purchased services for twenty four thousand?
This is any type of services, because so this could be, I I don't know without digging in what that is. But the purchase services is going to contain um. All our utilities um. Telephone, yeah, heat, electric, gas, um sewage. All those types of things and any type of if we have to call like a plumber in, someone like that, that's gonna all be under purchase services.
So.
But I continue to beg.
Well, I'm I'm curious if that's likely like a budget and expense, because if you look, I'm looking at the three months. Prior to that, right, fifty grand. Uh okay, yeah, I'm I guess I'm just curious about what that looks like.
Yeah, I'll take it. I keep seeing.
Uh those were my questions. Thank you.
And then uh I actually, I don't know if this is a. This might be a fridge item, but I'm looking at all these uh line items for phonics materials. And thinking about act twenty and that cost and thinking it would be really nice to track. Act twenty related new costs to track how much that unfunded mandate is costing us. Again, looking forward to advocacy at the state level with our new legislature coming in. Be great to know kind of what that. What that pound of flesh looks like. Um that's all I have. And Chris. Anyone in the audience, visitors, questions? Mr. Martin, you do not need to state your address again. You gotcha. For tonight, we know.
Thanks, public disclosures. I don't. Listen to reports that you have given out. I just want to remind you, so if you're thinking about changing anything, that the. Vendor checklist report that or something substantially similar that is required by state law, hey, so we. Just don't get rid of that. Then in the expense report, there's several line items for reimbursement for P L C at work conference. And what's P L C?
Um that is a training. It's about professional learning communities at work. And it's a training for um systems for teachers to meet. And review student data and be able to make educational shifts to improve student data and to see positive results. So it was training for staff um over the summer to to come up on that. We've done two years. P L C at work, so we are working on training our staff in that area.
And in a prior meeting, this mentioned that. As since you discovered some two hundred thousand dollars, I believe H R A expenses that were not correctly categorized. And just looking at comparison and. Two thousand dollars seems kind of low. Is that just a this time of year is usually low and then pick up later? Or don't know until it adds up.
I don't know until I haven't like looked at every month what those are, but that's pretty consistent. The I think a couple of months ago, when I started recording it in the current year, one month was maybe around four thousand. So um. It could be up to. I believe two hundred and fifty thousand based on the people who are the number of. Participants on our plan. So that's the projected cost. And um. I'll have to dig in to see that history and when that funding might be larger.
Another one, I have occasionally seen in this report mileage expense re- first, and I've also seen. What looks to be payment for actual fuel expenses. That's wondering is there. Difference of when you do one versus the other.
Yeah, yeah, um the mileage reimbursement would be for someone um with approved travel. Um they may be traveling in between buildings for their job or maybe traveling to an approved conference. And we would reimburse that mileage for that, the I R S rate. Um there's also fuel if um someone is going and fueling up a district vehicle. And that would be fuel. And we would charge that too. And then also um possibly families who are experiencing displacement or maybe um. Fuel in that instance too.
Then not sure this is a now or a different time question, but you'd also in a prior meeting. Prior meeting mentioned that you're still double checking everyone had proper licensure to recategorize. Fun to expenses to fund twenty seven. Is that affirmed now or?
It is affirmed that we've made those changes. And now we're also looking at this year to to make sure that we catch it ahead of time.
I forgot to mention this one earlier on the audit, but just something to. Keep track of things as they're going. It's if you're carbon copying on. Exchange emails between auditors, business directors. To see if they're frequent, they say the auditors request something five, six, twenty times. That's probably is. You know. As a.
Like to CC the treasurer.
Which is a practice that I'm just currently in place. Um I don't know that I get CCed on everything, but I do get CCed on the notifications of like updates and the. For instance, the audit was done, they had to submit the audit for the next year's study.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. And Michelle, can I continue to marvel? Your answers, your knowledge. What's going on in your district? Thank you. Okay, uh there is a motion pending. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you opposed, motion passes. September financials are approved. At this time, if there is no objection, I propose we take. We recess for five minutes and if you could pause the. Any objection? We are in recess for five minutes.
Any policy? I think, I think we can do that.
I move to change our agenda with the policy and the budget tax levy.
Figure.
Second. Any opposition? There is no opposition, the agenda is amended and we are now moving on to item what is now three C, policy updates.
Alright, so we had an opportunity to look and review policy suggestions. If we go into those policy suggestions I was tasked with after our last meeting, taking a look at some of the changes that the board recommended. Our search and seizure policy, based on the recommendations according to our NEOLA rep. So good is a match in terms of renewing language around gender. And so those revised pieces are there, as you can see. Provisions from NEOLA are in green and in pink, our revisions to language are in blue and yellow. So I tried to clarify those so that it's very clear where our revision landed. So you would be able to see that we are looking at not defining our staff or students by gender basically in our first policy around search and seizure. In the second policy, policy seventy-five four oh point zero five, NEOLA with the changes that were proposed would not guarantee this policy. So I do, I know, wanted to disclose that to the board. Offer the opportunity for there to be discussion with more approval around that. Concerns around changing the language to open it up to any student versus students with an IED or five oh four changes in policy in NEOLA's line significantly. One cautionary piece would be in practice, we could, you know, in our practices, we can open those things up if we're going to guard it in policy, then we also have to fund it in policy too. So that would be something that the board would need to take into consideration around approval of this policy. With, with the board's own language. So the board can adopt it and it can become local policy, or the board can decide to shift some of the recommended changes that we looked at and go back to more, a more NEOLA aligned policy. The last policy on student mental health services did not contain any real significance, just a few changes from the board that were technical, so that one would be comprehensive. So bringing these policies back with the changes for approval is the recommended motion.
So I propose that we go one policy at a time. Starting with five seven seven one, is there a motion? Policy five seven seven one. There's second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Alright, policy five seven seven one with the revisions from NEOLA is adopted. Next is policy seven five four zero point oh five, assistive technology. These were revisions I proposed, I'm actually a little scratching my head over NEOLA's reaction, the reason I suggested changes to this was really just to improve the language because NEOLA's proposed policy had already opened it up to other students, so I, non-IED and five oh four students, so I'm curious why they think that we're adding anything. It's curiosity to me, so the question I had is, I don't fully understand what the nature of NEOLA's like legal defenses, would it be that they would defend us if there was a challenge to the content of the policy? Or to its application in our school practices?
So I would, I'm sorry, I would put this one on hold and I would push back a little bit and I'd get a more clear reason in terms of the legalities of it, because even looking at the one of the acts they cite, public law, it does ID individuals with disabilities and for other purposes, so like, I'm not, I guess I just want to know what, if it's rooted in your reputation act, the ID act, Southern Congressional Act. I want to understand them. What they find is the legal support to defend this.
Any thoughts?
I would just add, and I didn't feel, I felt we refined their language, I didn't feel like we substantively changed the intent of the policy. So, but it is confusing.
And I, what I did think was, there was one word. If you look at paragraph three, where it says, in our edited version, students who may benefit from assistive technology, et cetera, will also be considered for devices. If that was may also be considered, I wonder if that would answer their concern? Because then it is more discretionary. So I wonder if you could run that by them? So if you don't have a motion, you don't have a motion, and does anyone, we don't even have to move to table, there's just no motion, we'll just hold on this one, alright. Amy Danielle?
Yeah, but I also just want to point out that they there are change, maybe this is, maybe this is, this can they changed other language from the policy that was revised on our children. It says students may need assistive technology in order to more fully participate, that's the approved, enacted. The blue is what they have, the yellow is, yes. I'm saying that blue language is not actually in the policy that was revised on our children. So again, just, just some more clarity around.
I see what you're saying. Alright, final policy, eight three nine five, student mental health services, promotion. I moved here for a policy eight three nine five. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, policy is adopted, policy eight three nine five, alright. Done with that agenda item. Moving on to the twenty-four, twenty-five budgets and tax levy.
Agenda item three C, budget adoption and tax levy, there are two budgets for adoption here, one with the four point five million referendum, and that's coming in as tax revenue in the general fund. He brings about a general fund and budget of revenues of twenty-six million eight hundred fifty-three thousand five forty-two in expenses of nineteen million one hundred and four thousand five oh eight. That revenue line is, and the tax levy are the differences between the two budgets for adoption. And these budgets are in formal required budget adoption style format. And I have, so this is the budget adoption format that is required. It breaks down each of those. Breaks down the revenues by their source, and then it breaks down expenditures by their function, so purpose. And then at the bottom, so on the summary sheet, budget adoption and tax levy. It has each fund's revenues and expenditures that are also in, as in the budget for adoption, and then the all funds tax levy. So what is needed here is the board to adopt each budget and then adopt course of tax levy with it. For that. Want me to go line by line?
Which document are you looking at? You're looking at the?
Yeah, it is called the ten twenty-three twenty-four. Agenda item three C.
Budget adoption.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, well, what do you guys think, do you need her to go through each line item?
Do you have, I think you have to read it from the record.
Okay.
No? We have to, we've always read it along.
Okay, okay, so let's first do the budget and levy in the event the referendum fails, start with that, how does that sound?
Okay, so the general fund and budget will have revenues of twenty-two million four hundred three thousand five forty-two and expenses of nineteen million one hundred four thousand five oh eight. The special projects funds twenty-one and twenty-seven will have total combined revenues of four million six hundred one thousand eight oh six. For both of those. And I think that might correct.
Hold that. Yeah.
I am on this, yeah, is that the one without, or if you could just scroll down to fund twenty-one? This is what? No, if you could scroll which one, one, fund twenty-one. It doesn't matter, yeah.
The numbers should be just, you can vote, right?
Yeah. So we got free, freedom there, so fund twenty-one will have revenues of, I can't see very well, nine thousand four hundred, nine thousand nine hundred and forty-seven and expenses of twelve thousand. And then fund twenty-seven, if you could scroll down a little further down to twenty-seven. Little brother. Fund twenty-seven will have revenues and expenditures of four million five hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and six dollars.
I agree. So is, I, thank you, so what, this number is wrong in the?
They, they combined, yeah, that's correct, it's wrong.
So what's the line number should be?
Four million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars?
That's the fund twenty-seven.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, the fund twenty-one is, they're not balanced. Fund twenty-seven is balanced, let's. So you could, you could do those as read.
Sorry, should we read those numbers for us?
Yeah, fund twenty-one will have revenues of nine thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and then expenditures of twelve thousand dollars. And fund twenty-seven has revenues of
Four thousand five, four million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and six, wait.
Yeah, I shouldn't have combined those.
And revenue and expense is the same.
That is correct. Fund thirty-eight, the debt service fund will have revenues of four hundred and twenty-three thousand six twenty-six and expenditures of four hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. Capital expansion fund forty-six will have revenues of three thousand five hundred dollars and no expenses. Food service, fund fifty will have revenues of three hundred and seventy thousand and expenditures of three hundred and eighty thousand. The community service fund eighty will have revenues of four hundred thousand and expenses of four hundred and fifty thousand. This budget will have a levy, a general fund levy of thirteen million five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Five hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and a non-referendum tax levy of four hundred and twenty-three thousand six twenty-six. The levy rate based on property valuations would be five dollars and seventy-three cents per thousand.
Sure, I'm sorry to ask this, but with that error with fund twenty-one, fund twenty-seven, are we sure that that, that number is accurate?
I'm calculating it right now. It's fine if you keep them separated like that, but I'll give you that fine number.
Are you asking if the change in those numbers affects the levy?
Correct, I was asking if we don't have all that's levy.
Oh. Those are accurate, okay, yes.
Okay, so hypothetically, there would be two separate motions, one for the budget, which we can then discuss and vote on, and one for the levy.
And go through the budgets for the potential failed referendum as presented with the directions that are currently being calculated. But, and I don't need the tax levy right now?
No, we're just gonna need the motion, the budget.
Okay, with the all funds levy of thirteen million nine hundred eighty-one thousand four ninety-three in general.
Oh no, we're just, let's start.
Should I just say as presented?
Yes, a motion to, it would be a motion to adopt the budget in the event the referendum fails as presented.
Yes.
I will just make the motion, I don't think the president is supposed to, but alright, I will make a motion to adopt a budget as presented by Michelle in the event the four and a half million dollar referendum fails and as revised, great. Second. Discussion, we'll start with Katie, any questions or thoughts? Danielle? Carla, I had a question, but oh, the capital expansion fund forty-six, the revenues, is that just interest?
That is just.
Chris? Alright, we have a motion to adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five budget in the event the referendum fails, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's do one anyway, yeah, Chris Robinson?
I'm.
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 Daniel Bailey.
I.
Carl Pennington Crossbow.
I.
Motion passes.
Alright, so then the levy associated with this budget. Yeah, the all, you will be, motion to.
I will make a motion to approve the levy in the amount thirteen million nine hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars, assisting the general fund tax levy thirteen million dollars five hundred and fifty-seven, thirteen million five hundred and fifty-seven and eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and a non-referendum tax levy of four hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and one six dollars. For the budget we just announced, should the referendum fail, with provisions as presented by Michelle.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, Chris Robinson?
I'm.
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 Katie Avalos.
I'm.
Daniel Bailey.
I'm.
Carl Pennington Crossbow.
I.
Motion passes.
Moving on to the budget and levy in the event the referendum passes.
So if the budget, if the referendum passes, the general fund and budget will have revenues of twenty-six million eight hundred fifty-three thousand five hundred forty-two and expenses of nineteen million one hundred and four thousand five oh eight. Special projects funds twenty-one and twenty-seven will have revenues of four million five hundred ninety-nine thousand seven fifty-three and expenditures of four million six hundred one thousand eight oh six. Capital, the debt service fund will have revenues of four hundred and twenty-three thousand six twenty-six and expenses four hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. Capital expansion fund forty-six will have revenues of three thousand five hundred dollars and zero expenses. Food service fund fifty will have revenues of three hundred and seventy thousand, expenditures of three hundred and eighty thousand. Community service fund eighty will have revenues of four hundred thousand, expenses of four hundred and fifty thousand. All funds tax levy will be eighteen million four hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred ninety-three of that, the general fund tax levy will be eighteen million fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and the non-referendum tax levy will be four hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars based on our property values, that would be a levy rate of seven dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Great. Is there a motion on the budget?
I'm to approve the budget based on a voter approval of a four point five million dollar referendum as presented by Michelle.
Second? Second? Any further discussion? All in big, oh, right, roll call, Chris Robinson?
I'm.
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 Katie Avalos.
I.
Daniel Bailey.
I.
Carl Pennington Crossbow.
I.
The budget, alternative budget is adopted, and then the levy.
I move to approve the budget with the potential four point five million dollar referendum approved. To have a general fund tax levy of eighteen million fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and a non-referendum tax levy of four hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars.
For a total of eighteen million four hundred eighty-one thousand.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to point out that I worked some numbers and I looked at some national data around per pupil, like per capita spending. And I wanted to remember to mention this here because we don't often talk about per capita spending, but I could be wrong, but what I calculated is that if the referendum fails, our budget is going to look like we're spending, and after you take out voucher number, we're spending, we'll be spending somewhere between thirteen and fourteen thousand per student, which would put us in the bottom quartile of per student spending nationally. Like, down way low. If we, if the referendum passes, then we're going to be spending between, I think about eighteen thousand per student, is I think what I calculated, which puts us right there with our peers, so it's an interesting look at, because the number looks huge, but what the referendum budget does is put us on par with what looks to be typical appropriate per student spending, what's happening in our state and in the North Shore, so that makes me feel much more confident about this being a reasonable levy proposal and a reasonable budget for our school district, so I just wanted to share that effort that I did between these ears. Alright, any other comments, thoughts?
Yes, could I add, so when you talk about comparative to our peer districts, those districts have also gone to referendum, right, many times. And are in the upwards of like thirty, you know, like, you can look it up, but Fox Point, Maple Dale, Indian Hills have been going referendum for several years. And their community has paid eight million dollars since two thousand nine for a referendum, another referendum in twenty nineteen, ten million. Fox Point, thirty-eight, three million eight hundred, twenty fifteen, twelve million four hundred and another twelve million four hundred three, four years later, so there, they have higher per pupil spending because they have done operational referendums and asked their community to supplement what the state is not funding for them. And those are operational, not capital, not for facilities, so I I just want to say that it puts us in that same category as well to get to that level of spending if the referendum fails.
Correct, yeah. Yes? Farm, do I see?
And do we need to state the tax levy rate of seven dollars and fifty-eight cents?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, Chris Robinson?
I'm.
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 Katie Avalos.
I'm.
Daniel Bailey.
I.
Carl Pennington Crossbow.
I.
And that motion.
I, and that motion assets. That took long enough, my computer went into sleep, huh? Alright. That is heavy business and I have a cliff. Does anyone need a break or should we just push on forward? We are on to item, for a very mysterious item to me, we've been of canvassers.
I will go ahead and introduce, consistent with Wisconsin State Statute seven point five three, parent parental three, municipal campus, school district clerk Katie Avalos will be appointed, um, Kayla Porcheski. And Kim Hess to serve as the district board canvassers prepared for the November fifth election. That statute was to be.
Um, yeah, so, yeah, I would motion, I guess, to appoint Kayla Porcheski. Donna's in two years and don't know, she's Miss B, yeah, she has a Miss B in me. And then, and Kim Hess serve as district board canvassers for the November fifth twenty-two.
Second, second, right, any further discussion? Chris? Pardon? Katie? Daniel? Twelve minutes. Eight minutes. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. Very mysterious to me. Do they actually count the votes?
They favor, I, I see, yeah.
It comes off, and we have to like present this, like, I need to state it again.
Got it, got it. Yep. Okay, moving on to item five A, superintendent update.
Alright, so thank you. I do want to have an opportunity to update both the board and the committee that on Monday, October twenty-first, a staff member was assaulted by a community member not affiliated with our school district during the school day on a playground. The Glen Hills Police also found a firearm in the vehicle of this community members vehicle as part of their investigation. I just wanted to review with you some of our policy around facility security and weapons in relationships and process and proposed additional mix-steps that the administrative team retained leadership to this incident. So, one of the things that I want to point out here is that our district that in every effort shall be made to apprehend those who knowingly cause serious physical harm to our students, staff, visitors, and/or property, and to require prosecution of those who were harmed to persons and or property. The board will seek to repair the damage and the safe payment of need to cover up such repairs in the case of damage to property or to person. So, the board does authorize the superintendent to conduct searches of non-student visitors or vehicles on school property where there's reasonable suspicion of violation of the law or school rules, and the search is reasonable in the scope related to the objectives of the search and not excessively intrusive. So providing schools the right to be able to determine whether or not a threat exists against our students or staff. The superintendent is also authorized in cases to use metal detectors or walk-through detectors in school buildings and on school district property. So, sort of wanting to review this policy in terms of thinking about those measures in which the school is allowed to take place in order to be able to protect our students and our staff. Further to that point, that all of our exterior doors to the building each day shall be locked during instructional day preventing entry into the building and that all visitors to the building during those times be directed to a single entrance of the building. The entrance shall be the entrance closest to the school office and visitors must identify themselves for the purpose of their visit in the head of the school through our intercom system or in our case at Glen Hills and at Parkway, or at Parkways Intercom System, but at Glen Hills it would be through our window. All persons other than students and building staff shall be checking in with the school office and shall complete the visitor logs. We know who and is in our building in terms of when they check in and when they leave. Each visitor shall be given a tag and that should be worn at all times in the building so that we know that that person is visiting. Visitors intended to visit a classroom during instructional day must be escorted to the classroom by either a staff member or if age appropriate, a student from the class. School office staff must contact the classroom teacher to verify then the visitor is expected. Typically, practice is that an administrator who walks and he does speak after instructional time. All visitors are expected to sign out prior to departing the building as well. Outside of instructional times, no person other than a staff member may be in any school building except for the attendance at a public function such as a sporting event. Any visitor to our schools may be refused entry or asked to leave the building at any time if the building administrator or event supervisor determines the visitor's presence is disruptive or likely to become disruptive for the safety and security reasons. If a visitor refuses to leave a proper pass by the building administrator or event supervisor, the building administrator or the event supervisor shall call to the school resource office or local law enforcement as appropriate. No staff member should attempt to physically remove the visitor unless the visitor presents an imminent safety threat. Failure to not follow these requirements above when entering or remaining in school facilities may be subjected to a fine not exceeding a thousand dollars. In circumstances intending to provoke a disturbance of the peace, persons may be fined not more than ten thousand dollars from prison, not more than ninety days. I wanted to uncover some of these pieces just to allow both our community and the board and our staff to understand that we do have the right to deny access to our buildings if we feel like there is any situation in which we are putting staff or students at risk. Our administrative team has met and discussed our processes around these kind of incidences. Wanting to communicate to both of our staff through staff meetings that in the event that we would be asking somebody to leave our property or premises, that we seek to find an administrator or another support person to help with that ask so that people are not in that work that they're doing. Just clearing too, some organ tools to restrictions. Any case in which an individual is a subject to a court order restricting an individual's presence at the school building including any restrictions to the individual's physical proximity to an individual that is a student or staff member or school faculty, the building and administrator shall inform staff in the situation and if any staff member sees the individual on school premises, that staff member shall immediately contact law enforcement and school office. So in the event that any citizen in our community would have restraining order or untrespassing citation, they would not be allowed to be here and we would ask that our staff be identifying such a person and providing them with the descriptions that they would identify. So, another key area I want to address due to the nature of the incident that happened is a reminder to our school community and our families and other visitors that the no parent or other volunteer may carry in any fashion possession concealed weapon, whether they hold it permit or not while transporting students or anybody issued for possessing a concealed weapon anywhere on our school grounds or in the parking areas, so it should not be within, within our school grounds. Weapons defined as being anything that could cause harm, so making sure that that doesn't come into the school. It also indicates that the superintendent may refer a visitor or volunteer who violates this policy to law enforcement and officials which we bill. So just wanting to just kind of cover some of those pieces. Our administrative team had a time to debrief the situation and we will be working on pulling in some specific action steps to help support visitors not utilizing our facilities while they're designed for our student use. So part of that would look like us looking at signage that would help display in our playground areas that our school spaces are reserved for our students during hours of school operation. In addition to that, we will be working on no weapons signs for our entry doors to make sure that we are reminding parents of that policy in many visitors. In addition to that, we did have the the administration at Glen Hills reached out to parents of frequent students who were outside and may have seen pieces of what happened to ensure that parents also could make a reach for support services. And in addition to that, we met as a team today to talk about utilizing our text feature within infinite canvas and developing a script date of various text messages that could go out to our community in a more timely fashion with not a lot of detail, but just to let parents, to assure parents that there is an incident happening that their children are safe and that we will be setting out further details later as a way to be more timely. And so this will require us to develop those scripts in a way that will fit in text format and to train our secretaries on how to push those out, so. But we will be working through that process so we can get that information to our community in a more timely way. We know that with the currency of information off as news travels that students may text parents and call the alarm. One of the key issues is really helping parents understand as well and families that we want them to if there is a threat of danger or if parents came mass here that could cause further further amplifies situations, so letting parents know like we cannot release students at this time or we will release students at this time so that we can be very clear in our communications.
What sense? Remember when that happened in Nicolay? And then parents were like driving to Nicolay and then putting up on Facebook, I'm here, I'm looking for my child, it was it was really scary how much information was going out on social media that I had hoped would not be in a long-term situation, so, yeah.
So those are students in their same area.
Ah, gosh.
It was bad.
Yeah, yeah, and they're in their situations and I think it's a reminder to our school community, to our administrations, to our staff, to our students unfortunately, that there are many areas of safety that we seek to plan for and control that in any given moment. We are all vulnerable and that it takes the clearness of everyone and with thinking of everyone, I am super appreciative of both the staff here who are outside who supported a teacher in need and made sure that any students present were immediately taken to a safe place. I'd like to thank our administrators, Mr. Lee Williams and Mr. Liam Williams for working to de-escalate and I really wanted to also give a huge thank you to the Glen Hills Police Department for their timely response, their follow-through and their ability to answer any questions that we've had in the past of the situation. So unfortunate, incredibly unfortunate situation, but a very appropriate and responsible person.
Um, I wanna say, can I say his name personally? Are you comfortable with that or should I avoid his? The person, the staff, I think he'd be okay with me saying it personally, but it's totally up to you. Oh, okay. The teacher, John, is someone I've known for more than a decade. I spoke with him today, he called me and I just wanna share sort of the meat of what John talked with me about. I think it's important to remember that he has been a parent in our district, he's been associated with our district forever. He became a teacher here as an act of kindness to our district in a time when we were short and we were desperately, it was before I was on the board, but there was a desperate need for subs and John was like, ah, I'm a retired lawyer, I guess I could do that. And so, I mean, he's here because we need him, not because he needs us. He's a, he's like the figurative and factual voice scout and just one of the kindest, most decent human beings I know and when I learned what had happened Monday, I was filled with like a tiger mother rage because I think of every person in our school district, every child, every teacher as a member of my family. And I felt like someone had walked into my house, I made myself cry, I'm gonna stop myself. I felt like someone had walked into my house and attacked a family member and I spent a couple of days feeling extremely vengeful and very angry and wanting some retribution. And that's uncomfortable for me, but there I sat until John called me today and we talked at length and you know, he's focused on the kids, which obviously we all are, his first concern was with the student who was outside with him and the potential harm that had been done to him, even though he got clocked and something broken in his nose and a concussion, but he's worried about the kids. So that was the first reminder to me to stay where my focus needs to be and he reminded me that what matters to him, what matters to me is this restorative work we do. And he wanted me to remember that everyone has bad days and that it's really important that we model that for our students, that people have bad days, even terrible days, even when we're doing the best we can. And for this person, this is what this terrible day looks like. And John is sitting immediately in a space of thinking about restorative practices. It's, I, he, he talked with me about, you know, his experience when parents complain about kids who act up in our schools, parents, and often it's kids with disabilities to say we, you know, we want retribution against that student, we want punishment. And his message to me was, I, I don't wanna model that. I don't wanna model that, I wanna model restoration and I think what makes our world safer. I have said this myself so many times, what makes our world safer is not vengeance. What makes our world safer is restoration. So I just wanna share that here so that people know who John is and what an optimistic, open-hearted person this happened to. Though I would never wish this on John, of all the people who would bring this message to me after getting punched, it would be John. So what that makes me think of, on the other hand, is all these secondary. So we do have an obligation for teachers, our staff, our students to create a safe environment. So I think about this balance between accountability, which is essential, and this restorative work. I know we've talked offline with Anna about whether restraining order may be out there and I don't know what role our district can play in the prosecutorial process, but it's possible that we might have a role to play in some restoring practices and just helping build a feeling of community and safety around this incident. I don't know what that looks like. Me, I just wanna go out and defend John's justice and body, but I appreciate that he brought that perspective. Sorry, talked for too. Anyone else?
I checked in with John yesterday, just he had texted him. He and I also have known each other for years, since like she said, he's been a part of this whole community for a very. And that was his, his main thing to me was, I will heal, I wanna get back in this building as soon as I can because those kids need to know that I'm okay and that everything's gonna be okay. It's a feeling, like, you know, teachers can tell kids as much as they want, he's okay and he's gonna be back, he's gonna be back, but until he's here, they're not gonna.
That's John.
That's where he's at.
I, oh, sorry, no, no, no. I would, I would wonder within the printed text that we have, do we need to consider revision to regular property given that it explicitly states?
It does, it does say in the policy, it does reference school facilities as well and grounds. I believe there is denotation about that in that policy because it is a piece that I read. It is, like in this instance, it's pretty, it didn't stick out to me as strongly there, but it is noted in there. So, yes, I don't think it would hurt to come back to this policy and revise it to be more often seen based on our experience.
I, I was gonna suggest something similar just on my reading and this is like super overly broad, but something like access to outdoor play areas and other parking lots and other outside areas are limited to student staff invited guests or people engaged in events, something like that. I think would add a little protection and good reading.
I was just going to express gratitude for the responsiveness of the administration, so taking this tragic and awful situation and being like being forward, looking, looking at policies, looking at location, looking at how do we, you know, best inform people and so, so I appreciate that. I think in the past that would have been more talked about and not actually done. And so, it's great to see you guys just getting on that and being accountable for that, so. And just thinking about John.
Hey, John, I hope you get better soon, yeah.
He did also say he very much appreciated like the way he was supported by the administration of all of the staff here, both immediately in the.
Okay, there's a, there's a foundation called I Love You Guys Foundation. So they've done some presentations of the education we mentioned and they talked about crisis response, standard response protocols. And they talk about crisis response, standard response protocols, and about having disciplined lessons. So it's just a resource to look into and really go about texting. Yeah, it was, I think column. Um, I love you guys was the last one, she's out of her family and then they started this nonprofit and I think it's nonprofit. I don't know, I I just heard about it, so I think that might be, I've always kind of. I love that that was where you guys were thinking about texting, like getting information out there. Um, I've thought about communication in the larger community too. And I know our our amendment and our priority is families, you know, staff. Maybe the board falls in there, but um and this is just like a fridge, I'm I'm gonna put it in the fridge right now, actually. Next door, next door.
I think, okay, right, because that's where a lot of people got me with this, someone what heard it on a police scanner and then straight up on next door and then it's speculation.
Yeah, um to to further that, I just, I also want to um let the board know that, you know. You approved a a school safety plan earlier this this summer before the start of the school year and that um. Michelle has a lot of expertise in school safety, number work with Quadsco and so she has been working closely with Liam Williams and Ryan Craig. Um, and also has gotten support from Nicolay um in their safety plan as well and so that they're working on. Um revisions to that and reviewing what's there, what they need to change in order to strengthen them as well. So that's ongoing work that's getting back to.
Any comments or questions from visitors or headline?
As we had the definition of weapon and also exemptions to it. Just one, they mentioned you might wanna have a catch-all there for anything else approved by superintendent or board. Since, please, you know, I read it, janitors putting Windex in their pocket would be potentially considered weapons. Also, potentially, this would be reason to have an SRO onsite potentially just in case, which. This is something to consider there. Then if you are considering mass texts in the event then, there is a reason to move people. Or kids off campus, you probably wanna also put in there what building they'll be going to and the address. So you don't have parents crowding the area here. Things on the budget or.
I forgot to invite this information. Yeah, you can always like hello my name. All right, go ahead.
I know it will be on this current budget, but is St. August's meeting, when that comes online, is that technically Glendale River Hills or is that?
Yeah, their entire educational spaces, we deal their 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 athletic fields. Some parts of other education spaces as well.
I doubt it, but any chance you could have Glendale cut off the road?
Oh, that's an interesting idea. Close to Whitefish Bay, right? For um determining which is true. That's gonna say this under the, under the still.
Oh, my under my understanding was either entrance would be. It looks like it's more if if their entrance would be.
They were re- trying to reconfigure for Washington Road there to.
Yes, that sounds like a lobbying question you could take to the city.
That would be great news.
For us, it's been either way.
Probably not as much, anyways. For the fund, Katie, I know that the rents were increased, it looks like three hundred thousand something, now it's four hundred thousand something. Final number is that expected to go up?
You have done arrived in and number of grants, yeah, yes.
I will probably mention this at every single meeting if the referendum does pass, but. When you have extra money throwing towards paying down the loan that you got from the state six percent interest, it was. On six million three hundred and sixty some thousand here and I know you don't wanna be sending money back to the state.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, and I apologize for not remembering.
We did have a panelist with the question. Amber, you're allowed to talk, do you still have a question?
Uh, hi, this is Justin Mosman online, can you hear me okay?
All right, I just turned it all up.
Hi, this is Justin Mosman online, you guys can hear me okay?
Okay, good.
I just wanted to, I guess, open up a little bit more discussion about uh an SRO at the school. Uh, it just seems like a lot to put on staff and administrators to. To handle so much of our kids' safety on top of what they're already doing for our kids. Um, and I guess I I don't know the whole history of uh the the school's use of an SRO or. Or non-use of an SRO and I just wanted to, I guess, learn a little bit more about it.
Yeah, I I don't know that I have a full history of an SRO, I know um in the time that I have. Uh, worked in the Glendale River Hills School District, there has not been one, so that would be be in year five not having one. Um, I don't know if there there has been one prior to that, um we do um. I will say the Glendale Police have been incredibly responsive and um, you know, are always willing to to help us out. We'll reach out in that regard, um. I guess I would be curious, I don't believe any of our neighboring districts have SROs at the middle school level, it's more typical.
Yeah, that was the only question I I was thinking, whether our partner districts, whether it's common to have an SRO in a K eight district.
Yeah, I mean, I will say typically in my experience in working in a K twelve district, usually there's an SRO at the high school. We will then occasionally come over to the younger elementary levels and middle levels to work with students, but um. I would be curious to take a look at whether or not K eight um. K eight districts themselves have SROs as a part of their processes. Um, I also will say that too, that does come with cost and that cost is oftentimes funded by the district and it's funded by the district. So that is an additional cost, um standing definitely.
The Nicolay SRO is a, you know, these signs. So they share the costs?
Yeah, yeah, sometimes there's a shared cost and it usually is a law enforcement person who works with the um this. Law enforcement.
I would point out too that there are, should be employed two individuals who um sit at Glen Hills. They monitor security cameras, they um they are present in the building and they can address um and support staff. Um, they are not SROs and I've seen them and they have really great relationships with the kids from what I see. Which I think um adds a lot of value and um makes, keeps that community middle school, you know, feel. Um, and I personally don't know, I don't know that adding an SRO to the mix to what happened. Uh, to to our staff um would have prevented one person managing a a building, you know. I'm not sure that would have would have done anything, but I think that there would be a far long-term effect on having somebody in the building policing. Our staff and students. Amber, comments or thoughts for the board or visitors?
Uh, yeah, I guess I I before, uh, yeah, just um. I guess my 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 questions aren't necessarily would an SRO have prevented the incident on Monday. I guess my my larger concern is. When is the incident not what happened on Monday or more significant or um. I guess we're, like I said, I I feel like we're asking the staff to do things that are. Somewhat outside of the scope of being administrators of a school. And I and I don't know. The hesitation of of why a law enforcement officer is seen as. Negative or policing people at the school. Um, as opposed to a positive of providing a resource and an asset to the school.
Yeah, I hear you, Justin, I think um. I mean, this is an issue that always comes up for discussion whenever anything scary happens and I know some school districts. Have successful SRO relationships in their schoolhouses, right? Um, and I know an SRO doesn't have to walk around with a weapon. On their belt, um for me, I worry about having a weapon in the schoolhouse if the SRO wanted to. Wear a weapon, I know the Nicolay SRO wears like full flak gear, right? She's got weapon, uh handcuffs, her flak jacket and I. I guess that's a way to normalize police officers, um I. My own, you know, intuition is that that's not appropriate at a primary K eight level. Uh, what I've been thinking about is growing up on the Eighth Army Military Base in Seoul, Korea, sixty-six to seventy-six. We had armed officers who allowed us on and off the base, but in my school experiences, I never remember seeing. An officer in my school areas, it just didn't happen and it would have, would kind of freaked me out is what I think, um. And I've looked at a lot of the data around the efficacy of SROs, um. Positive and negative in my, you know, it's a mixed review from the evidence that I've seen, but um. I don't know, I think it's, I appreciate you bringing it up. I appreciate you wanting to talk about it and I think we should have a discussion about it if you want to. I know Anna is open to talking with community members about issues of concern, especially around staffing, which is kind of in her. Her primary, you know, uh, bandwidth. So I, I'm not sure what else we can address tonight, um.
If I could just just comment, and Justin, I appreciate you talking about the the duality of roles and the lack of expertise and all of those components. But um even with an SRO present in our schools, based on board policy, it would mean responsibility of the administration to work in conjunction with law enforcement. Um, probably beyond an SRO to develop a school safety plan and to um train staff in that plan. Um, and so an SRO in the school really is um serves sort of as a community liaison to the police department. And then also can um, you know, help support any issues that might arise. Um, but you know, usually it's more of a preventative piece, but that SRO would not be responsible for developing and executing and doing the training around that plan. So to your point, you are right, it is not something that um we went to school and education for. But it is something as an administrator that I've had um pretty like a training um in terms of emergency response. Um, safety planning, um, you know, um, you know, training on threat assessment. That is also a part of the work that um we do to develop ourselves to change, you know, to to meet the changing landscape. Of what it means to be in a school um in twenty twenty-four. And and that is unfortunate and you are right, I would like to be able to just solely focus my attention on educating children, but the role has shifted. Um, and there are training and supports that are there, um but I do welcome a discussion with you, would love to hear you about more about your viewpoints around that if you would like to contact me.
Okay, thank you, one one other question real quick, I was trying to find the safety plan, where where is that? I didn't see it in the like the policy on the board docs.
Yeah, you can see our policy that we have a safety plan, but our safety plan is not something that we share publicly. Um, you know, due to the fact that we need to have confidentiality around our planning to keep our students and our staff safe, if that makes sense. Um, so those inner parts of that plan are not something that are public.
Got it.
And they're also, that plan is not subject to open records requests as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Justin. Anything else? All right, moving on to the meeting closing, two do items. Feature agenda topics or meeting debrief? Anyone?
I remember we talked about bringing the. I believe it's been back in October and October is now anyway over, so I was just wondering if we could get that on the agenda for the.
Yes, I I guess the update would be we um. With the referendum, it's felt very uh weighty and. Oh, yeah, no, I think that I think we talked about bringing it in. December or January, but looking at a longer charter for the committee so that we could like do like relay. Do some of the foundational work, identify leaders, potential members, have them meet with Anna. Um, and then I would be able to bring something that would that person. But thank you for actually, I probably appreciate. And um Anna and I chatted briefly recently about um board resolutions. What I call our rainbow resolutions and singing your song, talking about making a um annual calendar. Of um resolutions and in my dream, like resolutions that are for December. Like December is X Y Z month, we would bring to the first meeting in November. Because then the school district would have a month to plan activities around it. Um, and then at the second meeting in November, we could get an update on what activities are. And then in the, yeah, you see what I'm saying, it's like, you know, right, so you would have like a month before, a full month before. You would have that resolution passed, that'd be time for planning and then two months later, you could get that update. On what activities are covered around it, so I know there's just been too much going on for us to get ahead of this curve, but that's kind of dreaming forward. So something to think about and then if you put it on board calendar, what those resolutions are gonna be. Then you can get it on the district calendar and the school calendars and make life easier for her. So that's what I think is sort of a little to-do.
Well, inevitably, I think of something in the middle level where we don't have a meeting and I forget to jot it down and get here and I'm like.
I feel the weight, I feel like the weight of budget and stuff. And so that's like, that's kind of, even though this meeting went really well and was efficient, I just, I. Find certainly are hard and heavy because of what's coming and plus the changes. Um, so, you know, the information is out there, it's on all of us to talk to people, share the facts. As board members and I have to be sharing facts on next door.
Oh, you did? Great, great, um, yeah.
Just the facts.
Just the facts.
Anything that's opinion is just my opinion, it does not be opinion of the board.
So, so I just, I feel the way.
New skill, I observed no fence crossing, I and I didn't even know you were on the front, but I read it, I was like, oh, that's Katie, who's sharing facts? Oh, it's Katie.
Very, very useful.
Very busted and has done a lot, a lot of work.
And that's, I don't know, so I just wanna acknowledge that, there's a big weight over all of us and I.
Uh, I'm wondering, I feel like we used to get a language for the motion.
Oh, in the, in the, in the, um, yeah, or, you're right.
And I, I feel like we should, so that it wouldn't feel so risky to.
Recommended action.
And I used to remember before I was a. And I used to, I need to remember, before I was the president, I used to mouth up like.
Right, right.
And I could still do that, but you know, I'm trying to follow.
That's okay, I just.
Roberts rule protocols and not be the person.
They don't feel like really weighty.
Right, that's.
So like, so like, you don't even have to do it for all of them, but these ones where it has to be word in a specific way, you need A, B, and C, if we could like, maybe at least have B and C.
And I could, I could, we could sort that.
Something to check on is that in past years, all the public content has contained. Um, like a paragraph or something to be read and that includes.
Hold the flag and attachment.
Yeah, and so I don't know if that's, but I'm. It feels not, sounds like there, but it shows, yeah.
Anything that helps, I mean, I want to make sure that there is, is clear to the public, so that helps with clarity.
With respect to the motions, I would remind us all as well of what Danielle has already said, we're a small informal. We have formal work to do, but the the meaning of what we're doing is clear and even if we muffle a little, it's okay.
Yeah, that's the worry about the intro.
Okay, I agree. Um. Good evening, my发言. I have motion to adjourn.
That's in there.
All in favor?
Aye.
And two hours, yeah, we did, with two little breaks.